This is Tuesday night, school committee meeting, January 22nd. And we have guests of our architecture and engineering team and two topics to learn about and talk about tonight. First, fossil-free design and construction, followed by a presentation and discussion on education design principles in classroom design. This is where I think we're not being televised because the select board is being televised tonight? We are being televised, excellent. So welcome everyone in the audience, and then this will also be available on tape. So with no further ado, I will turn this over to Jonathan Levy of JLA.
Okay, so our agenda today is to discuss sustainability in fossil-free energy systems. That's been our charge from the town meeting for both of the 3K through 8 projects that were undertaken at Driscoll School and the Baldwin School. And for that presentation, I'm going to ask Carlos D'Souza, who is an actual electrical engineer, but he's the principal of Garcia de Luz de D'Souza, who's our school expert, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, security, IT engineer, and has been working with my firm now for at least 20 years. Carlos, do that or do this to you?
These three systems that use, well, you might use fossil fuels, so these are all electric systems. Some of them we are using presently. We do a part of the care which you call the Cambridge School. That is all electric. We use geothermal. In fact, we have no gas service to the building, though. We have emergency generator, so that uses fossil fuel, but we use B25 diesel. So that would be an option as well. up to about 17 degrees. And the way you power the efficiency on the right, you have the table called CO2. So that, on that project, everything on project, that's a light vehicle. So CO2 stands for coefficient of performance. And the simplest way to look at it is if I put one kilowatt of electricity into a kilowatt, so if I put one kilowatt, 2.6 CO2, and a 3.6 kilowatts out. So that's why we don't want to use electric plants. We put one kilowatt in, 4.4. The next type is air conditioning. Similar to heat pumps, except they're very efficient. They can operate around a minus 3 degrees. So you can use them for pressure, heating. They have a very high life system, most of the power is only from the exhaust system heat pump. Again, that's based on another project, a school project. And that had a core efficient. It's a pump that's a local one. Very similar to what you have in the heat pump. Third system, that was from geothermal, central heating pump. So what that does is it's a post fuel, it has some wells, it has a factory. So we use the ground well as a secondary, you know, a stratite or something. And the great thing about that is the ground is gross stream. And that, that will be the building without, so that's it. We'll see more graphics on this. So on system one, this is a, and we've tried, we have energy efficient heat pumps. So we basically have, so this is a big problem. And this is a type, you know, we've got to a new box, it's going to be a long box. So we actually, we don't, we aren't there for each classroom. And six works very much like, you know, the Washington schools, you can, it's simple, you can just always, and this is, this is a mess. And a lot of, a lot of important points, and also the heat pumps, and the reason why we put one, we have a problem with that, for whatever reason, there's something that obviously, we can still protect the building, and the reason. In addition to that, we always control the CO2, so we can take a sampling of the air in your classroom, and maintain CO2 level at a high screen level. If it gets over that, it'll open up the heat box, smaller than our shared typical home systems. One advantage in this system is that it's the lowest, uh, capital cost of equipment in the three systems. It's not used fossil fuels, and it uses conventional thermal, so product is building and everything. Another system is, uh, is what we call an ASO, electric VRF. So this is a little bit different. We have VRF, the red series outside, we have the, it's inside, and we have the ex and oils, and then we use, go ahead, um, similar to what you have for the electric. We can also instead of using, we can use, what they call, that's what you got, where is the, the ceiling, the sets in ceiling. So this is an indoor area, and I'm going to space that, um, aesthetically, we're not concealed, and we can, and we can certainly use the areas that are, as per, so everyone's thinking. So we would have, again, electric boiler, and that requires, it allows for damage, if something does happen, so we can help those, and this would be our backup or supplemental space. But in all cases, we'd be using a VRF. Another good thing about VRF is that we can have two, two different spaces. You have here and there, and there's, and so here on, here on a corner room, it's the shoulder season, like May or September, we can have one in the corner, and the other in the other. The other good thing about VRF is that it's fairly free to pump, so the pressure will flow to where the load is. So you have one condenser, and you have, like, one is totally different from the load in the other. And the VRF is the group, and you can switch the, the load is. It has, um, still fairly low cost for installation. Why I say low cost for installation, low energy use, this is really the best alternative to a chill tank. And the EUI, we've, we've got these down below, we have 25 to 35, we have, uh, um, and the last system is, is a geothermal heat pump system. So we have geothermal heat pumps. These heat pumps, we have, it's a lot, they have a whole tower on the roof, like you have, we have, we have, like, the lotion, come on, for those points, but it's, uh, this would, this would get an insane cost, and it's, it would be 500 foot heat wells, it won't, 75 of heat wells. We have a new well designed that we're using at Cambridge. It's, it's called a quad well, and you get seven times the per well instead of five times, so you don't have to go another 175 feet. So it saves costs on the water. And that's what we need to propose. So with the geothermal heat pump system, this will also be included at the same time. So it's really a thing we recover from. So this serves chill water or hot water to the air handling equipment. From the air handling equipment, we build the VAB boxes, and then you can store displacement devices, so you can cool the space. In addition, um, we would have reading panels, but in this case, they're not the electric. What happens with a heat pump, though, you take, it produces both chill water and hot water at the same time. So on the hot water, we feed the, the reading units. So what happens is this, we provide chill water to the air handling unit in the summer, but because it's displacement ventilation, we only want it to minus 68 degrees, we take the rejected heat from the heat pump, and that is used to reheat. So the temperature, and the air handling goes from 55 degrees to 54 degrees, because we would not get condensed, and the, and we heat it back up, and essentially, they're injecting water from the heat pump. So the only energy is just the pump back. In the classrooms, instead of just being a reading heating pump, it's actually what we call a chill beam. So in the summertime, this will actually be, um, this, this will provide cool chill water through it. Um, and we call that compensable, so it doesn't sweat, so we're supplying 60 degree water through it. So we only provide the hot air, the, the ventilation, all of the additional heat is done through the chill beam. And in the winter time, this is a counter rating. This has the highest installation cost, and also has the best energy line. So the EUI can range from 20 to 25, it can open with 25, and, uh, further technology, we could get to the 20 level. Some examples of Net Zero buildings that just recently have been done, this is a Cambridge School. So this building is above 202,000 square feet, and has another 40,000 square foot garage and solid energy. And it will be in operation this September. And we have another project, this uses VRF, this is ASOS. So this is either studios, classrooms, a full auditorium. This is a combination of a heat pump, the auditorium space, and then all of these smaller spaces, classrooms and other studios, this uses VRF, this is a combination. Another project completed in operation, Cambridge, is the A59 SF. This project uses ASO heat pumps, and originally had a design for geothermal. We had one well, that was kind of a 20 feet, and the well driver broke his bit, 600 feet down. So we gave up on the well, cleared the well drains, so it's a, it's a heated air source, VRF, operates very efficient, down to minus 13. Another project completed two years ago now is the Walton Lot, this is a center, so this building is all VRF, it's all, it's a good place, but it's, 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 it's a blast. This system has touch upon its PV. So if you have an all-electric building, it is good to have PV in the building simply, so you can offset the cost of electricity. Electricity is more expensive than naturally as, obviously, and this is one way of probably saving that. The cost of it has come down recently, recently, um, at a price of $100,000, so a couple of dollars has scored out of this, and we've got quite a bit. So both of these projects, we would consider shooting, so. And the state has also changed the investment, so there's another program that, you know, that the university's on, it's called SPRA, it's a one-time compensation. So on this particular project, we have 900,000, we have 190,000. It generates approximately $23,000 per hour per year, construction cost is $85,000. The spot compensation of 10,000 per day is $16,000 or $75,000.
Questions from school committees?
On the first two options, they were, the electric radiant panels, how do those work exactly, or generally?
Both of them, they're all, they're almost like a ceramic pen, it assesses itself, and you heat, you heat its mass, and it heats the space. Like, it's still heating, it's heating the mass in the space, it doesn't, it, it, it's nice.
So they don't have to be suspended like that? They can just be part of the panels? I'm just, just curious, based on...
That's on the outside of the home, it's in your structure. The only reason why is that the water was so clean, as far as, because it was all panels, easy to, to see, not necessarily that it would use this one.
Go back to the cost comparison, first slide. And, um, the, so, the EUIs of 60.8, 35, 25. Mr. Mason, did, did the town meeting vote on near net zero put us into the below 30 range? Is this the same? Yes. Right. So we, we actually have a constraint from town meeting that our buildings have to perform at below 30 EUIs. So does that mean option one is not viable under, in that constraint? Okay. So it's not an option. The way you presented it isn't an option. So we're really at VRFs or geothermal or some combination, or some combination of all three or something?
Probably it's going to be either this, geothermal, or it's going to be a combination of this and this.
But one's 60 and one's 35, but...
I'll buy that number, because...
Okay. Eyes.
...
And, uh...
Austin, this is, um...
Okay, fine. So you'll, okay, I got that. And the, the annual, annual electric consumption, or, those numbers, the, is that a million? The, I mean, the, the geothermal seems very expensive, and then what is the one, is that supposed to be a comma and not a period, 1711? That's supposed to be a million 711? Okay, so that number, that number's a lot higher than the other two numbers, is it?
This is...
Okay, all right. So it's not compared?
Oh, I have to, uh...
Okay, never mind.
Correct, you can't look at one and two, it's not for the same building, you need to...
Okay, so it's, the third column is the cost comparison, annual utility dollars per square foot.
Catching the advantage of modeling for these projects, you will see specifically what each one is, costs for each building, for the new school.
So if, I believe I'm correct, just, so everybody on school committees has the same understanding, that we're, town meeting passed a resolution in 2017 addressing near net zero, and it has some minimum lead, silver or whatever, but in terms of actual metrics, it's that EUI of 30 or below is the goal. And then just the town meeting passed a resolution for fossil fuel-free buildings, for the energy systems. And it means it has to be all electric, because that's, that's the fossil-free, fuel-free source, but it doesn't actually mean that it has to be net zero, or, you know, its own energy on site. It just says it can't be burning fossil fuel on site. So then the photovoltaic, or energy, electricity generation on site, isn't currently required by town meeting, but it will, it's a good thing, and needs to be looked at carefully in terms of the payback and all of that. Mr. Mason, you have, come to the microphone, please, if you will. From the 2017 action, not the new one.
First resolution is from that same photovoltaic.
Right.
They're applicable.
And then, right. And then, to date, the town has worked with a, under a power purchase agreement, where there's electricity generated on the site, but we just rent our roofs to a third party that can get the tax advantages, that, that was all done a few years ago, 17 municipalities banded together, did an RFP, one company came forward, got that contracted. Well, you can give us an update, but, but just from the point of view of our projects, putting photovoltaics on the roof can, but does not necessarily mean adding the capital cost to the capital cost of the project, to put the PV up there. We could also get it there to reduce, to be generating the electricity on site, but we could just rent our roof to a third party that would do it. And that's what the town has done so far, only. The town has not actually, to my knowledge, put photovoltaics on its own roof, spending the capital. So that's where it all remains to be decided, right? Mr. Mason, help us out here.
Yeah, agreement did disappear, so we're looking at a new provider. The analysis, and we need to look at this, can go either way, and spend the capital and get a nice payday. And they're almost comparable with a PPA versus putting, investing on a, I've seen both analysis, and they both, you have to...
Right. But it's, yeah, you can, you can...
The balance, there's a balance there.
And that's one calculus, and then the other calculus is how many capital dollars do we have to save, which we don't know yet.
Photovoltaics and run the energy model, so you can see both scenarios from the PPA state.
There's the...
You know, I just want to clarify, I think I heard you say that, which is my recollection, that that deal never went through. Right. So we're living here, okay. So right now, it's not like we have to undo it.
And also, the three, there were three school buildings, two, that were, that we voted to have it happen, but it never happened. So we still would like that to happen. Excellent. Mr. Broman.
With respect to the geothermal heat hazard, have you explored yet both the Baldwin and Driscoll sites to better determine the feasibility of whether there are any limitations for geothermal heat at either site?
First we'll cite off the for example opportunity to create a geothermal well field. The Baldwin School with the acquisition of the new property, we'll treat the, for some limited opportunities, but here, it's not clear yet what other opportunities, so we can get larger Baldwin's.
If there are no further questions, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you so much.
Just one request from our building committee. It would be helpful if someone, and maybe this is the town clerk's office, or someone, maybe Mr. Lowey knows, but if we can just have whatever the applicable town meeting resolutions are sent to the building committees, I think that would be nice. They are only applicable of them, so I think it would just be nice...
There's just two.
Two, is that right? Yeah. So we could, maybe we could just send those to building committee members, so that they can at least see them and understand what we're operating under, because I think, especially if we're taking off things that look a lot less expensive, if we're taking those off and taking off, it's important for them to understand why.
And I don't think we are. I think that 60.8 isn't applicable. That was a building, that's, that's a particular building, and it doesn't, it doesn't say that system one can't achieve below 30. So I'm not sure we are taking off the two. I mean, I think the...
What was the range on number one? The range on two was 25 to 35, the range on three was 20 to 35, but what was the EUI range on the first one? It's advanced like a slide, I think it was on the slide. 50 to 60.
Okay, so then it's not viable. I mean, it just...
At one point, you mentioned a combination of one and two.
Two, that could reach...
A combination, part of one and part of another, depending on the money, it sounded like.
All I'm suggesting is that if we are going to be telling the building committees that they're going to need to vote for something more expensive, we should just provide them the information from the town meeting resolutions, so that they understand the parameters of the topic. Maybe speaking five or two days in front of them.
You have to do modeling. For all electric, you have three combinations, and heat pump is one of them, but once we have the town meeting vote, or EUI between 25 and 30, remodeling, we're not taking anything, we haven't done any installation clause, this is just a comparative analysis to present what all was voted on. And heat pumps are the lowest cost alternative, but I would suggest you, if you're not viable sufficiently, you have, but we need to do a combination of the various systems.
And, and can you just, highest level, tell us what of that modeling work is going to happen in this design phase?
Modeling, yeah, I'm, so what I've learned, working with the Net Zero Building, we do a whole building analysis right now, so you start now, you start looking at your EUIs now, because that informs cost, materials of the building. So you look at glazing, it might bring you back on your glazing, might increase your AC rate. So you have to do a whole building design, and that's, um, both the architect and the mechanical engineer are discussing, and once you get your EUI of 30, then you know that your design is...
Right. And, but all of it's, has to happen now, so that we can have a coherent design and cost that fit together in schematic?
That is, that is correct.
Great.
It's a balance between all the respective costs, performance, operations, and merge them all together, and then you get what's called, when you do your analysis, so, I can, thank you. You would do a life saving analysis, I don't know, if you were to, comparative cost analysis.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Onto our next item on our agenda, presentation and discussion on education design principles and classroom design.
Well, this is a very unusual occasion, and I'm not sure exactly what the format really ought to be, in order to get the most out of it for you. In fact, I'm not quite sure how to define the mission of our presentation today, in terms of what value it would be to you. Sometimes there's a value to just open speculation. We have the opportunity of building two...
We have the opportunity of building two, round up new schools. That's a pretty remarkable situation in a town with a very advanced approach to education. And it seems as if we ought to take a moment, a breath, and just consider the point in history, in educational history that we occupy, and how it might influence these two projects. Sometimes to think about the present, we need to think deeply into the future, and not that we can do everything that we imagine the future will bring, but there are some time to aspects of the future, even the imaginative and widely speculative future that can introduce innovations that are valuable immediately. So that's the purpose of today's presentation. I'm going to tell you the kinds of things that I've been thinking about. The sources of many of these ideas are varied. Much of it comes from the institute that I've led for a number of years at the Graduate School of Education at Harvard, called Learning Environments for the Future Institute, where we bring hundreds of people from around the world to think about their ideas about building for education. It's a very interesting group. People come from as far as India and China to come to Harvard to exchange ideas about what education should be. Of course, building for education is always a catalyst for thinking about what education should be, because that's a moment of renewal and rebirth. So it's an interesting group because these are always people who are about to build something. Either, some of them are building whole networks of schools, some of them are building additions to schools. And I've learned a lot in talking to them, doing building. One of the, one of the most important aspects of the sighting at the Graduate School of Design, combined with the Graduate School of Education, is that the Graduate School of Education is the kind of wellspring of the educational philosophy that we're dealing with today. And Andrew, I'm going to be speaking, so-called, out of school as an architect, and please don't hesitate to correct me or at least forgive me for the areas where I'm just being a dilettante, but I need to try to be a dilettante about education because otherwise I can't do the job that really needs to be done of narrowing your educational vision and knowing about it to its physical incarnation of building. It's the wellspring because Howard Gardner, is a name that you may be familiar with, was the first, actually the first director of the Net Zero Project, which hosts the Learning Environments for the Future Institute that I'm involved with. And it's from him that we got the area of individual intelligences, multiple intelligences that informs individuated instruction, which has come together with the advances in technology to form an entirely different way of thinking about teaching and learning than we grew up with and even that was present, you know, ten or fifteen years ago. So that, that's much of the background of what we'll be talking about today. The first thing that I would like to mention to you is that along the generation of innovation in K through twelve, much of it trickles down from higher education. And one of the things that I've learned, we've also been involved in construction for higher education, is that higher education is today in crisis, in bricks and mortar crisis, because the campuses which have been built, this is Thomas Jefferson GVA, which you could think of as an incredible mechanism for conjoining the minds of faculty and students and bringing them together into this ferment in physical space that really is the origin of the American idea of a physical place of learning or a campus of learning. But today, so much of the delivery of educational content is being done virtually that it's falling into question the very nature of these fabrics, educational fabrics, so that facilities planners, campuses of all our great universities, that used to know what they're doing, don't really know what they're doing anymore. One of the, one of the main manifestations of this phenomenon, I know this doesn't seem like the case to rate, but in a minute, you'll see the connection, I hope, is the introduction of ways of bringing people physically together in ways that they couldn't on, on, on the web. You can have chat rooms, you can have flip classrooms, you can have a whole variety of different ways of bringing people together into communities of learning virtually, but what educational institutions are focusing on now is trying to filter out the parts that really can't be hosted virtually and really have to be in the physical world. And one of those things is just getting people to live and learn together. So you see in a place like UMass Dartmouth, these are, this is the original campus plan of UMass Dartmouth, you notice that like the vast majority of educational institutions around the country, just like public schools, they were created as commuter schools without housing. And now what's happened over the last ten to twenty years is this crazy building spree around the erection of dormitories in order to justify the physical place of education. So it's, it's one of those kind of phenomena that, that is a clue to what's going on intellectually on the campuses themselves. Why building all these dormitories suddenly? Why are all these community colleges and public universities built? Here's the UMass Dartmouth underway with its dormitory construction program. Eventually, the entire ring around the campus is going to be surrounded by houses. That was originally envisioned. So that's the situation that we're in, is a moment of really radical change in education, really something so different from what came before that it puts us in a terrible predicament when we're trying to build for the next ten to seventeen years. This change in education has really no precedent before what happened when Arsenal establishes Normal School in West, West Loop, just a few miles from here. Nothing this radical is happening, and it's accelerating. It's, we're in the middle of it. It's not the end of it, we're in the middle of it. So I just wanted to make a slide so that this lecture will be available to you so that as a record, and you can see some of the source books that I find, found to be of interest in preparing for this presentation. The one that I think is the most important, which isn't necessarily about education, although there's a chapter on education, is by my former colleague at the GSD, who I taught with for many years, Sarah Goldhagen, who wrote a wonderful book called Welcome to Your World. And in that book, she describes the way that the physical world conditions how we think. Really, that is the underlying theme of, of my presentation tonight, which is that the physical world, the world that we occupy and can touch and see, is really an extension of the mental and intellectual world. What we need to understand is how in shaping and making space, we're actually conditioning the mind. And in this case, we're concerned with the minds of children, which are infinitely more malleable than our own. So it's so much even more important in that instance. So this is the book that, this is the first place I would go. It's a well-written, visually read book. There are other books here, one in particular that David Pollack and I have enjoyed, I assume this is the one that you were referring to, it's, it's a book about the sole world architect who is known solely for his schools. And it's, it's a Dutch architect, his name is Arnold Pritzker, and he's created a whole group of schools through the sixty, seventies and early eighties that are notable. And I'm going to show you one particular aspect of them that I, that I found to be influential, and it is influencing the design of both the Drawbridge and the New York School. And some of the, this is visible learning, which is sort of the watchword of contemporary education. We talked about that in some of our presentations to the school building committees, and then some other more, sort of compending contemporary school design that you can see there. So the first topic is really the umbrella topic, which is how young people think. Because while we may be aware that education is truly in a revolutionary state today, what is really driving it is the fact that young people actually inhabit an entirely different world of ideation than we do. And in order to understand the places that they need to learn in, we have to have some window or of insight into exactly how they process ideas and how they actually, they think. I think, I mean, this could be a whole seminar in its own right, but I think the most important thing to think about is how, when we learned, much of what we did had to do, and it was technologically driven, with deeply exploring a topic individually and bringing it to a conclusion, a polished conclusion, which then could be produced as a finished product and given to somebody else to then absorb. Young people today, they don't do that. They, they, their thought is fragmented, it's open-ended, it's all about small unfinished pieces that they then broadcast into the world, whether it's on social media or whether it's actually through collaborative learning in their schools. They broadcast it into the world, hoping to find connection to other open-ended ideas. And then ultimately, the progress of, of, of group ideation is through these connections of open-ended ideas through collaboration. So collaboration becomes something much more than a method of productivity. It actually becomes the way people think, that the, the, the project of intellectual history is being pushed forward no longer by individuals, but by collections of individuals offering to one another unfinished ideas which are being grouped then together. And that really is the way our young people operate. So thinking about how a school might fit that mode, and I can put it in the most simple and primitive terms, as the difference between focused learning and, and group collaborative learning. Focused learning being the kind of learning that you can do individually in front of a computer screen, and then precipitating out from that virtual experience the, the, the product, which is not individual product, but group product. So that's the end of depth, and it's the end of conclusiveness, and it's the beginning of a new world of intellectual endeavor, which is all about collaboration, where collaboration isn't just something that is added to individual work, but it is actually the end. So one other aspect of that pattern of thinking that we don't have access to, that they live in every day, is the simultaneity of consciousness, which has to do with a lack of focus, the ability to literally have, literally be in the room with you, talking to you, and at the same time being, operating in another sphere, literally simultaneously. And they do this not only to socialize, but they do, I'm speaking of them as the other, but they are no doubt the other in terms of how very different their mode of operation is. They do this to socialize, but also to work. So the, the idea of being able to multitask, which is what we called it, multitasking is the norm, and the simultaneous, simultaneity of doing it is, is the norm. This is Fortnite, obviously on my son's phone, and you can, aware, many teachers are aware that a lot is going on during the moment of that classroom that has nothing to do with what's actually on the drive or anything. So it's, it's, the reason I brought this slide, which is something which is dear to all architects, is a slide from the sixties which forecast the end of architecture. In a way, we are experiencing the end of architecture, or at least analogied physical architecture, because architecture only now needs to be the complement of virtual architecture. So it's a kind of disembodiment that we're all experiencing together and that our children are living into, fully living into. So that brings us to, into how we can bring together bricks and mortar with the virtual world, and what are the areas where those two things can be, can be knit together. And I think the clearest way of, of talking about that is in terms of the things that the physical world can do much better than the virtual world, believe it or not. There are things that we know the physical world can do much better. And, and it's dubious as to whether the virtual world will ever be able to catch up in these areas where the physical world is better. And the one way that we can talk about it as being better is clearly the three-dimensional ordering of information is richer and more fruitful than the sequential ordering of information. So sequence is the essence of the virtual world, because the information is presented largely sequentially because of the limitations of the technology. But when we go into a library and, of physical books, and we walk into a room, we're presented with a three-dimensional map of information that we can order and discover things in, with a complexity, a layer of complexity, and a layer of temporal fluidity that is not achievable. And it's the same to be said about physical building. I don't know if you've been reading the New York Times lately, but they, they have started to fashion themselves as, as mentors of our mental and physical health. And one of the things that they've started to talk about is how, how, how dependent memory is on spatiality, that memory and space go together. And I think that's a very important thing to remember about learning, that learning is situational, and that learning has, is cited in a place, in a three-dimensional place, and that we associate the sensory experience of those places with ideas, that when ideas appear, when they pop up, they are associated with a place. So you can think of a building as a three-dimensional map of information, and that's something that we can actually direct ourselves to in the, in the creation of a building in terms of the hierarchy of different kinds of interactions between people that could be promoted by that building. Another is the idea of randomness, and the library metaphor is useful there as well, because we all know how superior browsing in a library is to the idea of browsing on the web. The idea of physically being able to walk from one bookcase to another, to be able to sample not only what is being served to us as the headline for that piece of information, but being able to take the book, flip it open, put it back. but being able to take the book, flip it open, put it back, relate it to another book, and so on. So yes, this is an apology for books, but it's really just using the books as a metaphor. Because browsing is something that not only occurs in a library, but it occurs all around us all the time. And it's something that doesn't occur very well in the virtual world. Then finally, randomness, which is so incredibly important to the production of knowledge and the history of invention, is based on randomness, is based on random encounters between people at doorways, in unexpected places, where suddenly a connection is made that couldn't have been made through intention. It had to be made only through happenstance. So that's also something that the physical can promote, that the visual cannot. So one of the things that's interesting about libraries, I didn't mean to be talking so much about libraries, is how they themselves have started to recognize the essential nature of complementing the web through the creation of physical objects. So one of the projects that I've been involved in was the creation of a fabrication laboratory at Boston Public Library Central Facility, the base here. I was really interested as to why they thought they needed to make a fab lab at Boston Public Library. It's because there's only so much dwelling that you can do in the virtual until at some point, something has to come out and be made physical so that it can be presented and shared. So there's something about physicality that always needs to come back as the kind of healing of the intellectual work and the virtual. So here's an example of an environment. This is a particular school, the Orsted School, which is one of the KGB system schools in Denver. So I know there's always a tendency for people to dwell in exotic as a placeholder for the future. But this is a very important example. And it's not just because it's exotic and it's the first one. It's because it's a school which has truly upended the concept of the classroom to put all the emphasis on the kind of randomness and three-dimensional intellectual landscape that I was referring to earlier. So this building is essentially one large open public space. It does have classrooms, but the classrooms are not the primary site of teaching. There are seminar rooms of different sizes and shapes. And they're also made open to the common spaces of the school so that through glass partition, the spectacle of learning can be demonstrated. And it's one of the things that I think is so exciting about a 21st century school, especially one that's successful like the ones that we have looked at, San Diego, at our Dearborn School in Boston, is based on. Which is the idea that through the spectacle of intellectual success, spectacle is the key word here, it means you can see it. You can see students succeed, not just their finished product, but you can see them doing it and succeeding. That students can be driven to engage learning without being asked to do it. They can be driven through the excitement of it, to stimulate one another, to engage. This is the building that does the very effective. Here's our Dearborn School, with a similar kind of arrangement, a collaboration space visible to other collaboration spaces where the students are literally stimulating one another to learn. Other examples, collaboration space. So here, collaboration becomes the true sort of center of the complementarity of the physical world and the virtual world at a variety of scales, there's our field school in Weston, where there's a central, what was called the information commons instead of a library. There's always activity here, kids gathered around computers, visible. This is the main lobby of the building, so you come right into the building and the first thing you see is children engaged in collaborative work. And then there are other types of spaces, pull-out spaces, and then medium-sized collaboration spaces. Why places matter? Understanding, that's a term that comes from another director of Project Zero at the Ed School. Understanding is going into a place and knowing immediately that you have a thirst for knowledge. This is the exhibit hall at the Museum of Science, which has deficiencies. But one of the things that it does so well, you can see, you can see it children's faces as soon as they walk in, is they elicit an incredible sense of wonder and joy at being, embedding themselves, wading into all of that marvelous activity. I wonder why a school wouldn't have that same effect on a child when you walked right in the front door and had that sense that this is a place where I can move about and discover and excited to see and learn. It's not all closeted away behind the closed doors of classrooms. It is immediately there to just wash over you. This is that school that I mentioned in San Diego, of the high-tech high schools where everything is visible to everything else. And then to conclude, I'd like to just talk about some specific elements in what is called evidence-based design. And this is really the heart of that book by Sarah Goldhagen, Welcome to Your World. The reason it's the heart is because at the back of it, there's a bibliography. And many folks, when I give these kinds of presentations, ask, well, how do you know that? How do you know that? Well, in the back, it tells you how you know it. There's listings of all the studies that describe the various characteristics of educational spaces and other kinds of spaces, and how they affect the human mind. So the first topic in terms of the way that we are approaching the Driscoll and Baldwin School is the idea of domesticity versus institutions. So I think a school should be more like a house than like a courthouse. It should be a place that's warm, that has certain scale, that has a certain sense of materiality, that forms a continuity from the child's house or domestic setting to the place where they're learning. So that's something that we can design for in the choice of materials, the sizes and shapes of spaces. The second is daylight. Daylight, you'll see in the Goldhagen bibliography, has had numerous studies substantiating its positive effect on education, measurable effect on education. It's not just that it's pretty or more beautiful, it's that it measurably affects standardized test outcomes for students. A third is the idea of small spaces and collaboration. So how does collaboration happen? Does it happen just as well in the nave of the Sharp Cathedral as it does, say, in your breakfast bucket? No, it doesn't. It happens much better in a place which is enclosed, where people are brought together, and where they're comfortable together, where they can sit comfortably, where they can have views to nature, where they can have their ideas sort of reflected towards one another by a small space. At the same time, there are places, there in a building where there is room for height and for expansiveness. And one of the really odd studies that Sarah cites in the book is the association between big ideas and big spaces. People have bigger ideas and big spaces. So certainly, there would be a place for that. And then finally, the idea of geometry, and how important geometry is to our sense of being together in community. That curved walls and curved voids have a different effect on us psychologically. Here's some examples of some of these qualities. These are again taken from our projects. Here's the field school with its almost hundred percent daylighting throughout the building. And that includes not only north-south, but also east-west, where we're using reflectors that are translucent so that not only cut off the direct light, which is unwanted, but they actually gather the light and direct it into the space. This is Hertzberger, and this is the lesson that I've learned by studying some of these schools. And it's one that, it's more, a more eloquent example of something I tried to talk about in the past, which is the importance of transitional spaces, which we could call thresholds. And there are a variety of different threshold experiences that we have. So as architects and as clients, we tend to focus on the destination, the program spaces, places where you put furniture. They're actually no more important than the spaces that don't have furniture to the progress of learning. And this is true whether it's at a biotech company in Cambridge, as true there, that is in this school. So it's these threshold spaces that become really important because they're informal, because they're not directed, because the students have the sense of freedom of being able to discover without being in a formally labeled place for that discovery to happen. So in Hertzberger, we see these colored areas, which are called threshold classrooms, which are at the entrances to classrooms. So before you actually make the commitment to be in the program space, there's a place where learning can occur. These are some of these threshold spaces. They're out into corridors, they're actually at the boundary between classrooms and public spaces. There are a whole variety of them in this work, it's a way of actually classifying this work. And I think not only is the boundary between the classroom corridor and the corridor itself, which is a space which is not real estate, which has a name on it, but also the boundary between the school and the community as being a really important place. That's a place for interaction between parents and teachers, between parents and principal. And it's a place where a lot of important community business happens just because it has that functionality. These are alcoves of the type that we are talking about at both the Baldwin and the Driscoll School, especially at Baldwin, where these breakout alcoves occur in front of every pair of classrooms. Ideas of how students love to be in enclosed sheltered spaces. They love to do their creative work together, coming together in places that are like little buildings that they can occupy and name for themselves. And in classroom design, there's a certain amount of flexibility, which is kind of the antagonist of that idea of making, defining alcove space. And that flexibility is very important to the 21st century matteagalli, which requires the simultaneous use of many different places within a classroom. But also, we can make alcoves by lowering the height of the space in certain areas and raising it in others. So here, actually Carlos was just telling you, this is a place of convergence between mechanical design and architecture. Carlos was telling you about how he'd like to have perimeter radiant heat. And you can build that now to shelves, which lower the scale of the space while at the same time performing a mechanical design function. Here's another space. This is a specialist space within one of those schools that has both high and low. There's a high space where the teacher is coming together with a larger groups of students. And then a breakout space where, hey, go over here, sit on this bench, and that's where the books are, and you can lay them out and crawl upon, onto that bench. Also curved spaces, which I think are really interesting and haven't explored very much in school design. One of the reasons for that is that up until recently, curvature in architecture was costly. It's still a premium, but it's no longer the premium that it used to be because of computers. So geometries that we couldn't have explored a few years ago are easier to explore now, both in terms of design and fabrication. So here, you can see our panoramic teaching wall that we've described to our school building committees, which provides a curvature, a place of closure, where sort of like a mini lecture hall, the teacher can come together, a small group of students, or a small group of students can come together by themselves with a feeling of being in a place apart, even though it's a subset of the larger space. Or even in the overall organization, this is the Driscoll Plan a couple of iterations ago, even in the overall organization of the school, where there are sweeping curves that create convexities and cavities that help give the students a moonlight center of closure. Also, student governance and being able to create their own space. Furnishing is a lot more important than it was in a post-World War II school because furnishings are what allows students to configure their own space for a variety of activities. Here's furnishings that we designed for one of our schools that are infinitely combinable by the students into a variety of groupings, from bleachers to study pits to individual study carrels. You can make all of that out of things like the series, like the blocks. And then finally, materiality itself, which isn't just a matter of assigning materials, like wood, which we don't use very much of. We use what is trim, like this is wood. But we use wood-like materials, like woodgrain plastic laminate because of its durability. But to be able to touch it, this is a bench detail, to be able to sit on that bench, to be able to touch it, to be able to put your fingers into a groove that was designed and put there on purpose for somebody else to find and engage. Those are the kinds of things that make a place ready for innovation. So with that, I can take you on a virtual tour of both projects because many of you haven't had the opportunity to be on our school building committees. I can do that, or we can start to have questions now, or what's the will of the committee? Should I continue? And we can do it at the end.
At least one question.
I'm not, I'm seeing this situation like this conversation. And I'm in meditation, because there is too much noise, there is too much distraction. And as I discussed, as you were starting out with my professors, we don't stay. I thought to myself, what do we, what would we do about students who can't play soccer, even though they're like working? Basically, are distracted, too. And I find, by what I'm saying, it belongs to the larger community. But I still worry about the big open spaces. They're very exciting when I walk over to their school, which I have done with my students in the fall, more recently. It's one of the most exciting places to go. But we know that when we started with the open spaces, what? A lot of times, the open spaces get very poor. Because it's just, it wasn't much. So I guess what I'm saying is it's just sad. And we should know that, I've heard that with general chemistry, a lot of people. I think I can change all of that.
Me both. And I agree. I remember meeting And I agree. I remember meeting with you all and having that conversation. Lawrence is an interesting case study in the failed theory of the seventies open classroom. And it's it's a problem for anybody talking about twenty first century learning spaces because it's an example, well, it's a problem for two reasons. First, it was a bad idea. Um second, it's an example of how trying to predict the future can lead us into uh into a quagmire as architects create ourselves. The Lawrence School, that what you're talking about, the open space, was a series of open classrooms with no boundaries between them. So these projects shouldn't be confused with that. Here we will have distinct classrooms with doors that are gasketed that can be closed. The folks that visited the Dearborn will remember that when you went into the classroom and closed the door, uh that you had uh a real hush of quiet. So the teachers and the students should be able to choose the type of environment that they would like to do specific type of work in. But let's keep in mind that the modern workplace is an open environment. One of the skills that's that we all need to to acquire is the ability to focus in a place where there's a lot of simultaneous, ongoing collaborative work around us. So so there needs to be both there.
I agree. Great. Well, why don't you, why don't you begin to show to the degree, again, you've just begun schematic design or a few weeks into it, but the degree to which all of the uh concepts and ideas and theories and everything, you know, sort of the big picture stuff that you outlined, uh where where you're finding opportunities to 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 bring them to bear in Brooklyn?
Yes. So the first uh element that I wanted to share with you is uh the openness of, this is the Driscoll School and now we're on Washington Street. This is a early, rather primitive model that shows uh the Driscoll School and what it will look like. And the first thing that you'll notice about it is the shape of the building is like a wide open embrace. The building is has a sweeping facade that opens itself, welcoming uh the big community. And then at the ground floor level, uh in uh kind of a double uh intent, the uh multipurpose room is right here in the foreground of the building. And the double intent is that on the one instance, it's there to mimic the scale of the nearby commercial buildings, which are in Washington Square, right next to it. So it's it's continuing that massing uh of low-rise uh single-story commercial. But it's also doing exactly what the commercial buildings like to do, which is opening itself to the sidewalk and to the community so that by choice, when the curtains want to be open, uh we can see what's going on inside the school, uh that multipurpose uh area. Another thing that you'll notice about the facade is how it consists of these very large, uh remember I was talking about bays or alcoves? Uh so those are places within the classrooms that are subspaces within the classrooms, but they're also gathering and shaping natural light. So they're gathering the light into them, but they also have these sunscreen elements which help to cut off the unwanted light and gather uh the desirable light. This is now we can sweep around and look at the building from the other side. This probably doesn't relate to the topic of the evening, but uh I'm sure you'll all be thrilled to see what we have um uncovered in terms of a uh an asset for Brooklyn sitting there hidden, which is a large new open public park which will be centered in the middle of a residential neighborhood rather than having that old building plugged in a little bit. That open park will then leave and interface beautifully with uh the school itself, which will have a learning common atrium uh around which are the traditional classrooms are gathered. There are two entrances, one directly from Westmore Terrace and one directly from the play fields. And if we go inside. Yeah. Here's the learning commons atrium. Yes. Not an invention of mine, of Bannister, but done in the real. And here we are with the, this is the survey, uh cafeteria. This is the learning commons here. Uh these are the monumental stairs up to the second floor entrance off Westmore Terrace. These are the stairs that continue up to the classrooms on the upper floor. And then this is the grand wall that that leads us out to that public park, which will have playground and recess area directly there. Barbara, the uh shift around. The the library, it's not quite well modeled here, but this this will be the library directly opening into the learning commons at the center of everything and we'll decide how closed or how open, how glass or uh it will be. But that that's right there in the middle of everything. See the upper floors and the skylight. Driscoll School. Now we can look at Baldwin. Here's the Baldwin School. And uh what you have is in front of you is East Street. This is East Street here. And this is that little uh cul-de-sac, Oak Street, which we have now acquired property on Oak Street. The entrance to the new school will be off the corner of Oak and East Street on a gentle ramp coming up to the main front door. Then we'll be able to look through and underneath the gymnasium, which is here, and the multipurpose room is here, which is there to see Baldwin's whole playground now. There's also parking. Just wanted to get inside as well. Come into the main lobby. And what's wonderful about the main lobby is it's related to the first of two courtyards. This is the primary school courtyard. And these are elementary schoo- uh these are kindergarten and pre-kindergarten classrooms front and directly onto that courtyard. To one side of us here is the administration area, which we've not modeled yet. And then if we look in the other direction, there's a monumental stair which takes us down incorporating nature. I kind of themed these as the Baldwin School and nature and the Driscoll School and the city because one is kind of the city school. The other is is really a suburban school, which is about its relationship with nature. Now we're headed down those stairs to the second courtyard, which has an amphitheater in it, a double glass wall. Uh this is the cafeteria, learning commons. And the two-story space opens out then onto the Baldwin School playground. This is a place of coming together. The school is not uh kind of poistered into different parts because of this main street, because we're calling it linear atrium. Try and get you. Atrium space. So the corridors, instead of being closed to one another, are actually open uh to one another and to the view to the courtyard. So now let's go back and take an overview. This is looking from the Baldwin School playground. Look out and get a sense of the overall organization of the building, which we were very pleased to discover we could minimize in terms of massing. Two courtyards, the primary school and we minimize the passing along East Street. So it's now two stories. These probably will be aligned with the three different cohorts, lower school, elementary school, middle school. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or would like to know more, please let us know. Yes.
Chris, why choose that spot?
Why choose Oak Street?
For, yeah, yes.
Rather than East Street?
Yeah.
But it has to do with the way we're uh unloading uh students. So there's a yeah, a connection. Area of view. So there's a drop-off loop. Uh it starts here. It teets down, actually goes onto the building and then comes back out the other side. It's uh it's close to seven hundred linear feet in length, about thirty to thirty-five cars. Uh so many of the students for the Baldwin are not going to be walking. They're going to be coming uh by parent automobile. So we located the entrance to relate to the drop-off area. So you can see those cars there dropping off. Also, uh there wasn't really enough room to create an entrance because we had to fill the whole site all along the street. Create an entrance on the south side and also like to try to make sure that entrances to schools that we designed are either on the south side of the school or on the west side so that they're probably there during the day. If that's a threshold, threshold is all about. Place where people come together, if it's a place that people are attracted to, people are
I I will say, that's loud. I will say, Michael, that there are a number of us on the building committee. There are a number of us on the building committee that actually requested a smaller entrance kind of right there on Heat Street because uh the buses uh will come there and the vans and showing us special uh special means. It would uh help to have to have a staff person right there that they could, they could just bring them right in rather than having them walk all around. So we have requested that.
Yes, it's coming.
I just would like to know that we
Yeah, and I'm, you know, I mean, I think it's uh see what you can do. It's a challenging site. I think, you know, it's it's interesting that it sort of feels a little bit took away.
No, it's a challenging site, but it's incredibly beautiful. So you can see the views that the students are going to be exposed to in daylight in the area. Will make the place a stu- a place students really will enjoy coming to and be attracted to.
Can you tell us that, oh, you have to be the microphone. Sorry. Wish we had a stool for you. Um, uh.
No, it's
Um.
This is, this is uh, oh, okay. Oh, there is a stool. Okay.
There you go. Perfect. Um. What, can you connect some of the larger themes or observations about the changing nature of learning? Um that our children are living half in a virtual uh realm and half in a physical realm? Or any of the other themes that you introduced in your talk? And explain to us how that is uh generally uh influencing your thinking and work as an architect and where it's manifesting in what you anticipate in either or both of these buildings or what you already have accomplished with the schematic design that you put in place in these buildings? What jumps out, uh big or small repeated gesture, atrium, you know, sort of where are you uh taking advantage or fixing the challenges or whatever of our chintam world? Uh that's going to make these buildings serve into the future for the new?
Difficult to affect change in a public building environment. So the school that I really think needs to be built ultimately is the Orsted School that I showed you in Denmark. For older kids, I think for younger kids. There's a, there's still a custodial function that's very important and the unit custody seems to be about twenty kids. So there will always be classrooms that help bound the level of supervision for for younger children. But once you get past, I think Superintendent Ba could tell us what the age is, but um I know in one school system, they thought that the at 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 grades four and five, there was a kind of uh threshold and to a and to a uh a potential for intellectual self-sufficiency that could justify, started to de-emphasize classrooms. So um you know, that the problem is that we have uh, we have to have our foot in the past, one foot in the past and one foot in the present. There's there's no, there's no getting around that. That's where prudence uh leads us to 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 design towards. So it it's going to be a hybrid of a uh of a traditional school and a future-oriented school. One of the primary reasons for that is because of the teachers that we have. Uh we can do a lot of training, but um that training has to be rooted in current practices as well. So the specific areas that we started to introduce innovation in the school in the broadest category ha- has to do with uh with well-being and uh and environments for uh encouraging students to want to be at the school and not think of it as as an institution. So small-scale spaces, a sense of of warmth in the materials. So small-scale spaces, a sense of warmth in the materials, a lot of daylight, flooding the interior of the school with daylight, both for the benefit of, of children in the present and also for the benefit of the, of the, of the environment for sustainability purposes. And then the heart of it really is in, is in the nature of collaboration. So in my view, what happens in terms of the physical environment complementing the virtual world is that we precipitate kids out of the virtual world, where they do most of their content gathering, into collaborative groups, into collaborative activities. And I see the growth of the schools that we're creating as, as moving slowly out of the classroom into the fuller occupation of the variety of scales of collaboration spaces that we've created. So for each of these schools, there are three primary collaboration spaces, scales of spaces. A small group collaboration space, which in the example of, of the Baldwin School, is formed by these, these little base structures, which are off of corridors, which are, as Ray Miesak calls them, pull-out spaces. So the corridor becomes an occupied pull-out space. Then at the end, is that furnished? It'll have a bench in it. Yeah, it'll have a U-shaped bench in it. And then the next level of collaboration spaces, the, using the Baldwin as an example, at the end of each corridor is a project, project area, which was in the educational program. You can see it here, it's like a pavilion almost, which terminates and caps each corridor sequence. And that space, which is about 400 square feet per floor, will be a place for medium-sized collaboration. I would imagine that being a place where students, they're doing research on the web, they're doing project-based learning, they're combining different disciplines, and they're starting to put into practice what they're learning by having materials strewn on the floor, by covering the walls with ideas, by having a place that their group, which may be across different classrooms, comes together, gathered from different classroom groups and comes together, and they come back there every day or twice a week or whatever it is. So that's the medium-sized collaboration space. And then finally, the, the large-scale collaboration space is the cafeteria, learning commons itself, and the courtyards, which are meant to be places for a whole-school type activities. For example, at the Driscoll School, there's that wonderful art fair, that there, those places need to, art, arts equinox, that becomes a whole-school-wide project that needs a site, which is being improvised today, but instead of improvising a site, there's a site which has been planned for, in the case of the Baldwin, it might be one of those courtyards or portion of the cafeteria itself, which is oversized, by the way. So that cafeteria is, is, in both schools, is called a cafeteria, learning commons, because it's larger than it needs to be just to seat the three seating students for lunch, and it bridges out and bleeds out into the, the common circulation spaces.
Is it that's larger because it includes the circulation space as well?
Includes circulation space, yes. So those are some of the principles that are being carried into the, into the building without dispensing the classrooms altogether.
So first of all, it's been wide-ranging, as promised. Thank you. I guess my question is sort of the, the trade-off between purpose-built spaces and flexible, durable spaces over time. I think we get a lot of fantastic feedback about our early education spaces, how thoughtfully they're designed, how well they're designed. Pre-K, K-1 rooms, we get a lot of positive feedback. I think we get less positive feedback in the middle grades about purpose-built spaces for middle school kids. And we kind of have these, there are things you can do to spaces to make them more flexible, but at the same time, that obviously takes away some of the purpose-built nature of them. So, you know, adding things like garage doors or, you know, creating kind of flexible spaces in between two other spaces that you can then kind of extend out. Anyway, I guess what I'm wondering is sort of as you think about sort of the, the balance between purpose-built and flexible, how do you, how do you think about that trade-off? So it's not, so every grade level doesn't, isn't exactly the same, but there are kind of different things going on for, for different age groups? And, yeah, I mean, I guess that's, that's.
You know, I had an idea for a school at one point, and we almost built it in Weston, where as the kids ascended in grades, that they would actually have different kinds of classrooms that they would move through, that they would be adapted for their age and for the kinds of activities that would. But it didn't fly, because in the end, we don't know over the seven-year life of a building, how these rooms are going to be used. So it's, it's problematic to make them too specific to, to, to a purpose. So that's where furnishings become so important. And I like the idea, and I hope that I can convince all of you to explore with me the idea of creating flexible furnishings that are purpose-built for Brookline. There may be ways of thinking about a, a functional purpose for furnishings that no one else has, and we can explore that, we have the ability to explore that within our FFME budget, as we did for Boston. So that's, that's one way of thinking about it. There may be different flexible furnishings for the three different cohorts that would be identifiable and help give a character to each one of those cohorts, rather than doing it with the shape of the rooms themselves.
My other question is, as you think about the different uses of the building, I mean, I was noting earlier that when they were talking about the hours of operation, that our buildings tend to be pretty heavily utilized, and not only by the schools, but by after-school programs, by community groups. The green spaces around our buildings are used constantly, even in given inclement weather in Boston. So I guess I'm curious, as you think about building a building that is both welcoming, but also safe, we've had a lot of those conversations as well, and, and open to the community and flexible, can you just talk a little bit about, this has mostly been focused schools, which is helpful, and, and that was the framing, but I think just as you think about the community uses as well, it's pretty helpful to think about what you would, what you do differently, or what, what pieces of the design are informed by community uses?
Well, that's, that's baked right into the initial idea of both of these buildings. What the architects call the party of both buildings is, is informed by co-locating community use functions so that they can be secured with a dedicated entrance apart from school use. So I'm looking forward to my next meeting with both building committees, where we're going to present diagrams of the different modes of operation. We'll be doing that with your committee and with Baldwin Committee as well. But to tell you the truth, you couldn't, you can't even pencil the paper unless you're starting to think about that right at the beginning, because you could end up in a box canyon otherwise.
I think you spoke about that, when you were talking about threshold, you also talked about that coming together of school, community, and larger community, parent community, and how it's very important to look at that space of coming together in support of the same questions and the complexity of uses.
Really critical to think about that place and to think about the potential for community use of the building overlapping. I mean, we have no idea how these schools are going to be used. We're in a, in a moment in social history where, you know, we've seen, you know, social clubs have fallen away, and bowling clubs have fallen away, churches are starting to fall away, and schools are really the nexus of community. They's, they're, they're about the primary thing that we all share in common and we know, we share as a value, which is educating our children to the future, but they also happen to be the place that, where we know, come to know each other the best, in parent groups and even in communities interacting with the schools. The advantage of this, these particular commissions, Brookline, your school, Baldwin School, is that unlike at the MSBA, the MSBA doesn't allow you to talk about anything having to do with non-educational use, and they won't allow you to add a community room or, or even describe a function that is not directly related to education during normal school hours. But we could do that here. We could do that more effectively here, because there's a good likelihood that schools are going to serve much broader purposes than simply education. They're going to serve intergenerational uses, they're going to serve as places where, where people learn throughout their life. I, I, I would like to plan, be able to plan for that. Also, something that doesn't get mentioned in Brookline is the word stammer steam very often, I mean, that's not really part of what we're talking about, but in the, the orthodoxy of STEM education is the community integration piece, not just from the point of view of the building being accessible to the community, but there actually being a planned way that students engage real-world learning by internships or by bringing community partners or business partners into the school. And that's something that we can think about here, even at the K-28 level, certainly, certainly S-28, there are, there would be opportunities to actually engage the students in thinking about the real world around them, so that their education isn't, isn't just isolated by itself. That's, that's part of the STEM that I got, that we've encountered in other communities and no doubt will be important here, and makes the school a more vital and active part of the community than otherwise might be.
I'm really excited about a lot of your thoughts, Jonathan, and I'm thinking out loud, or thinking to myself, how, how can we share this with families? And, and the reason I say that is that you mentioned that it will probably be a learning curve for some of the staff and the teachers to think about this new space and collaboration, and it's equally as challenging for parents, I think, to understand that. And, and thinking, you know, things like, you talked about focused learning, and I think, when I think about that, I think more of the individual, and I think more of assessments and what those look like. And if you're doing assessments around group collaboration, that's, that's a very different kind of a look. And again, you know, maybe you have it more visible, that it's more present, but, you know, how, how is that shared with the students and shared with the families and their, and the community? And so, you know, I'm thinking back, you know, back in the 50s and 60s, we sat in rows and we, you know, we just did that, right? And then there was a backlash to that, and we kind of went to the open schools, you know this better than I do, but we went to the open spaces and, you know, we ended up with peers, there's a whole bunch of them in Boston. And then as people said, well, that was too open, too, too much freedom, we ended up with our standards in the 90s, and the rooms were closed off. And so here we are in the teens, the aughts, and, you know, again, we're kind of, we're moving a little bit back to certainly more open, more flexible space, but not to the place where we were, I think, in the 70s. And so it seems like we're just kind of following this trajectory, trying to get that balance right. And it, and it feels to me like what you're saying will give us that kind of a balance, where we have some, some closed and some open, and how do we share that with families so they understand, you know, what it is that we're trying to do. It's not one, you know, every student for him or herself with the tests and the scores, and it's not just an openness that leads to, well, by learning skills, but some kind of combination, so we have a collaboration.
Arts achieve balance when the ground under you is shifting. That's the kind of the situation we have today. One thing that I gave a little short shrift to was the, another modality of, of, you know, thinking, which is, which is graphic and, and, and three-dimensional in nature, that students are, are far more visual than they used to be. This relates to the idea of multiple intelligences, and also the way that we designed these two schools in the way that many schools are being built, where the arts, music, the fabrication labs aren't sequestered away. I mean, it used to be that those kinds of things were off somewhere. Susan has been reminding me of this with the Driscoll, but they're actually highlighted and foregrounded in the middle of the building, so that students who excel in the visual world or in the world of making, so that their, their, and the, their, their sense of empowerment comes from their visibility of what they're doing, if not just test force. So that's another important feature of both of these buildings, and both of them have it.
I kind of have three, it's a little complicated, but three interrelated sets of questions, and to some extent, they key off of your statement that you, your, your belief, perhaps, that we should be moving towards that Danish school that you showed, that, that level of openness, that that's where we ought to be going to, European or whatever. So the questions are, are, particularly, I'm, I'm thinking about the Driscoll design with the atrium and a fair amount of broad circulation space around it. And your Dearborn School building, which has the kind of Starbucks-style workspaces at the railing that are out. And to date, I think what's been happening with the development of these two buildings, and again, these are K-28s, not middle school, high schools, and that's a huge difference, but is that the pull-out spaces, you know, there are the little bays in the corridors directly across from the classrooms, at the end of the hall between the classrooms, they're, they're quite intimate to the teacher and the classroom. And they're, and they're, they're, I haven't sort of heard and seen much about this sort of, students taking care of themselves, because maybe they're too young. But then my second aspect of this question was, I think where we're getting to in the, as the, the floor plans start to gel, is that you really, I believe, are going to be having middle schools on the top level of both buildings. The six, seven, eight are more, I mean, they're going to be upstairs. And so both in terms of that idea of allowing them a little more freedom that's invited by furnishing rail or, you know, sort of a little more, a little further away from the classroom, and then also more broadly, is there, in, in following on your sort of belief in the Danish, more open building, is there a conversation that the, that we and that the building committees, or maybe the school committees should be having, teaching learning, about whether that top floor should start, in any way should look different? And this is to the flexibility question that Zidkoff asked. Is, if, you know, do we start to open it up, dematerialize? Is it, is there some difference in how teaching and learning happens at those, at that age level that, that would have implications about how we build our walls and our doors and stuff, which is what we have to do right away? You know, that's what we have to do shortly, is figure out exactly what to do.
You know, one way of having your cake and eating it too is what we did at Dearborn and the Field School, which is through the use of these acoustic, re-rated flexible partitions, which allow you the potential to create open, wide-open learning commons spaces out of the classrooms themselves, because that, that's essentially what those flexible partitions do.
And you're, you're set up, because this is a two-section school and a four-section school, so all the classrooms are.
So if you wanted to convert the Baldwin and the Driscoll to an Orsted School, you would simply create, build flexible partitions, and then at some point in the future, all those partitions are thrown open, and the school becomes an open floor play. That's one way of, of, of addressing that, or maybe you just do that in the middle school portions of the buildings, where students would be more able to take advantage of it.
So I think that, thank you for picking it up.
So I think, thank you for picking on that. I just, I think there is something about, we've been struggling with what it means to differentiate the middle grade spaces, which is kind of what I was trying to get at, is are there things that we can do on that floor, given everything that you just said in the first half, which is probably even more applicable to middle schoolers than it is to little kids? I'm just curious what it would look like to maybe just do some things a little bit differently on the third floor. Plus, it makes it feel different to them, that they're getting a different sort of experience in their potentially, you know, 7th, 8th, and 9th years in that building or more, given that we've got essentially 10 grade levels in the building now. So I guess, are there, and again, people talk about, and I don't want to like microprogram, but we've talked about garage doors, we've talked about cap end spaces, we've talked about flat spaces, we've talked about just different size spaces, different types of partitions between classrooms. We've talked about just different ways to sort of lay out where arts, you know, science and some of the other, you know, health and some of the other common areas are. Anyway, I just, I think it's just worth not losing that question and sort of thinking about that as a, is there a way to differentiate it, mindful of this notion of like purpose-built versus trying to be flexible?
Well, I think we're going to have to think about this more in greater detail in the committee, but there's two things that I could offer you. One, if this isn't too abstract an idea, one thing that did occur to me about the Baldwin, because the site's constrained and we weren't able to get a concentric arrangement around kind of a one giant shared open space, I started to realize that these courtyards, by the way, they're very, by coincidence, they just happen to be beautifully proportioned. You know, courtyards are not all created the same. It depends on the aspect ratio of the height to the width and the relationship to the sun. These just happen to be very womb-like courtyards. And it occurred to me that it's really these outdoor courtyards that are becoming the shared learning common atrium by creating a lot of visual connection to those courtyards. And then, as you started to see me experimenting with playing with these treehouse boxes that are kind of suspended out into the courtyard space, that the courtyard itself, it gets more prominence as a shared space. Also, this one, by the way, is closely related to the middle school. If we think, end up thinking of it by wing, this is the middle school wing. And it's very closely related to this courtyard, also to the cafeteria learning commons, which again is a little larger than it just needs to be for the cafeteria. Also, there's balconies surrounding the cafeteria learning commons that are meant as project areas that are very visible. So I think there are a number of qualities that we could exploit that would help to differentiate that wing from the other wings. Plus, just the situation in that wing in relationship to the Baldwin School playground and expansive use. As far, the other wings are more in med scale and the relationship to their course basis, this one has the whole school playground unfolding in front of them. Important consideration, one of the things that we have proposed that addresses that, it has multiple purposes, but one is the projected teacher preparation area, which is less enclosed. You may have seen that in the plans. The idea is that those booths, those teacher preparation office booths, are actually in a situation where they can observe in all directions so that those public areas are all controlled areas. At the Dearborn School, we went one step further, which is that instead of closing the fire stairs, we enclosed the fire stairs with a very high-technology approach in glass. So even the stairs are fully observable, so what's going on there. So I think it's a really important point, and it's one that actually came up that time that we were together with the librarians, talking about the learning commons and the idea of a learning commons. And it was really a moment of insight for me, hearing you folks speak about it, at a place that needs to have some kind of ownership, faculty ownership, not just student ownership, that there needs to be a relationship. One possible staff relationship could be the librarian becomes a kind of curator of that open space, which I liked very much. We don't have that at the Dearborn, and I think we needed it, that there could be a specific relationship to staff people that would help organize, schedule, supervision, so on and so forth. So this media center does have a good relation to both that courtyard, the open space at the ground floor level, and to the learning commons cafeteria. So there could be that kind of organizational relationship if the school department decided they wanted that.
Village Corner School, they have those common spaces in the hallways right outside of the classrooms. And I'm wondering what kind of feedback we're getting from teachers on how that's working, if they're using the space. I've seen students using it after school, but I don't know what's going on during the day. So it might be interesting to get some feedback about that.
They're actually being used quite a bit, so I'll get that information for the committee on how they're being used and the different ways that they're being used. They've quickly become quite popular.
Do they typically have staff out in the hallway with them, or do they send them out, because they have those windows, right?
It really depends on who's using it and how they're using it. So it depends on the location of the space and the age of the student and who's sending students. So it varies, space by space.
Before we talk about this idea, the thoughts about the middle school, I really like the idea of sort of like freshness to the space, of something different for middle schoolers. They've been in this building theoretically at some point in the future for a number of years. And so I'm thinking about the transition between classes, because it's different than it is in the elementary schools, and what that looks like in that part of the wing. What does the space look like in transition? Is it just a regular hallway? What kind of time are we giving them? And even like the tutorial blocks, which I don't know if they have at all in middle school programs. So some of that flexible space being used for tutorials with supervision sort of like a more, I don't know, like a segue towards a more high school open format, but in a way that is supervised, because I also share a barbless concern, so I'm sure many of us do about bullying, that often happens when adults don't happen to see that exactly. So, but I think there's some exciting potential. I like the idea of like a feel that's a little bit different.
What I want to see is that understanding. You know, how do folks get back and forth? Do they get back and forth?
Well, I believe that it's currently envisioned, the Baldwin School property is totally self-sufficient. And we're not relying on the idea of using school facilities for the Baldwin School.
Maybe I misspoke a little bit. What I really wanted to hear about is to sort of see what happens on the backside of this.
Baldwin School playground.
Yeah, I guess that's what I wanted to hear.
As you're aware, these are sensitive questions having to do with the restrictions on the Baldwin School playground. I think one thing that we know for sure is that the cafeteria is going to have doors that open and spill right out onto the playground so children can use the playground. There's currently a play equipment area on the playground. I don't think, I'm speaking out of turn by saying that we envision new play equipment, play equipment that relates to the school.
I think you answered most of my questions, just talking about the doors. I'm just curious how people are going to move back and forth.
Yeah, there'll be direct connection from the cafeteria right out, and there'll also be a door here, which is at the end of the main street. So you'll be able to circulate directly out onto the play equipment. The play equipment right now is over here. David, here's the underpass. This is parking, this is the gymnasium. These are, this is the teacher lounge. These are science classrooms relating to the middle school.
That is the extended day programs. And where are they, you know, perhaps in the classrooms, but how are they accessed? How do those children get outside and back inside?
Exactly what I was thinking about.
I'll fill the answers to those questions.
We're, yeah, we're getting to the end of our time. Anyone else have topics or questions? So I have one more, and it kind of brings together a number of parts and pieces. One is, you know, sort of, you talked about, right at the front, you talked about understanding. And in response to my sort of first question of, well, so, okay, how are you, you know, so how are you doing it? Like, how did these schools advance your vision of where education needs to go? And what the, you know, part of your answer to that was a little cautionary, and it was sort of like, well, we're still tethered to having a classroom for each teacher in science and art and music, and maybe that's where Brookline is, as far as we've got today. And so we still are building all that within, but nonetheless, so what you said, to the positive is you're trying to make buildings that draw children to them in joyfulness. And that's kind of, was sort of a global answer, that we want these to be places like wonderful houses and parks where they want to be and they feel at home, which gets to that domesticity tie you made early on. And I think that you're doing it. I think that there's a, I'm very excited about both of these designs. They're quite different. One is centralized, and which is probably good, that the building that's got twice as many students as the simpler diagram, because with more students you need for wayfinding and, you know, you need it to be, I think that's an advantage. And so in terms of the wonder stand, and you talked about, also about graphic communication. And Ms. Fetterfield was talking about, particularly with the transition to more and more group work, how do you present that work back to the community of students, of other teachers, of families, you know, sort of, how do you put it back out? But the thought that occurred to me was, with all of the opportunities that you're creating in public space within and without these designs, I'm actually quite interested in performing art, not just visual art, and not even necessarily, I know my preamble is going on and on here, but I'm going to make it go on even further, because there's a sort of a focal architectural building that all architects know about in terms of public building and performing art, which is the Paris Opera House by the architect Charles Garnier. And what all architects know about the Paris Opera House is that the theater of, the more important theater isn't where the operas are performed, it's actually the lobby, which is even bigger than the theater. And it's multi-level and there's a grand staircase, and it's where all of the important people of Paris would see and be seen to each other. It is where the, it wasn't about the actors. Everyone went to the theater to be in community with each other. And that space wasn't the technical space. It wasn't the classroom, or in our case, the multipurpose room where theater happens. It's actually these other spaces that you're giving us so many. So it's more, it's more like one space at Driscoll with lots and lots of opportunities all around it and on different levels. And then at Baldwin, it seems to be many spaces, because you've got the amphitheater in the lower courtyard, but you also have the overlook of the main street down into the cafeteria. And there are a lot of places where community is going to be coming together three dimensionally with each other, with teachers' eyes on the students, and all of this excitement. And I think that it should all be, in addition to the sort of charge that I heard from school committee, which was that we, whatever we is, and I think it needs to sort of start with educators, thinking about what, whether, if middle school, school committee, I think you heard, school committee say, we'd like there to be a subtle evolution without a significant loss of flexibility in the middle school architecture, and at least try. And then if the pushback comes, no, we want classrooms there just like everywhere else, then we'll have investigated, we'll have tried. I think that for all of this kind of public space, I also would like to see the exercise engaged of looking at it more actively as interactive performance, sort of performance based, but not formal performing. I mean, yes, an eighth-grade play could happen in the atrium at some future date, but it's not so much specifically as that, as getting the K-12 performing arts coordinator to be in meeting with the architects to kind of look at all of those spaces and look for all the amazing opportunities of, oh, what could be done with this? You know, what is it like to come down the staircase or be on the staircase? I mean, we all think about the Kennedy Atrium at the Kennedy School, which is a major lecture hall, but it wasn't really designed as that. It's just that it became traditional instantly when that building was opened, that that's where major speeches were made, because people all come to all the balconies and then aggregate around. Maybe you've already been through this mental exercise, but having built the armatures of these buildings, now to look at them sort of in terms of how, imagine how people will work in them and what work in them and whether, because I think that'll inform the, the design.
Where we're headed design-wise, I'm looking forward to that. Some of it's going to happen in the next phase of the design development, where we actually think of each room as a separate project. But I imagine these public spaces being far more collected than they are in these group models, to see them as being very, the balconies being articulated, there's something wonderful about the students just diving into that me hive of activity in the center. That's the way it actually is turning out at the Dearborn. For those of you who have any interest, now that it's occupied, it's really something, because I've been there a couple of times. When you go there during the summer, there's all these activity centers all around, and you can see them going on, and there's work in place, and the walls are covered and they're written on. It's a perfect moment when it's just clean, finished clean and empty.
All right. Thank you very much. Super exciting.
Thank you for the invitation.
Energizing and...
Unusual, I've never done this before. To think apart from all the practical matters that we have to be involved with all the time, just think a little bit, get this jerky.
Thank you. Book me, thank you so much for indulging us in this extra meeting. I found it very valuable, I hope you did too, and I hope the public also. We stand adjourned.